Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for April 16, 2019. Item number one, if we could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Thank you very much. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Mr. Reynolds, any changes?
Nothing from staff, sir.
All right. Councillors?
I make a motion to approve the April 16, 2019, agenda. Second?
I have a motion, a second by Councillor Contreras. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, consent business. Any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Okay. Councillors? Councillor Lehman?
4A2, 4A3.
Others? Councillor Lehman?
Move the amended consent agenda.
I have a motion, a second by Councillor Brennan. Before we vote on the modified consent agenda, we would read it into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for April 16 of 2019. 4A1 approves the minutes from the April 2 and 9, 2019 meetings. 4A4 approves the suspension of City Code 114.11 for April 25, 2019, to allow the Pullman Club to use a section of their parking lot for an event. 4B1 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC050, which accepts a monetary donation in the amount of $2,394 from the Shakopee Lions Club to purchase six box hockey games to be used at community events. 4C1 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC047, which awards a contract in the amount of $1,061,440.50 to Ryan Contracting Company for the 2019 Street and Utility Reconstruction Project, which is CIF-TAC19-TAC003. 4C2 accepts the low quote and authorizes execution of a contract with Pipe Services Corporation for the 2019 Sanitary Sewer Televising Project. 4C3 authorizes the city's prescribed roadway maintenance work to be awarded as part of the 2019 South Metro Joint Powers Agreement. And finally, 4C4 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC048, which approves plans and orders the advertisement for bids for the 2019 Pavement Mill and Overlay Project, which is CIF-TAC19-TAC002.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I do have a motion, a second. The consent agenda's been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor, say aye. 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 Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item number five, now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address to the record, and welcome.
My name is Teri Hassan, and I work at the CAP Agency, and I also am the president of the Shakopee Diversity Alliance. And I'd like to promote our upcoming Seventh Annual International Festival. It will be on Friday, August 2. I don't have any flyers that have been changed, but this is kind of what we've done in the past. We promoted it as we hope to duplicate our very successful event last year with food, entertainment. The reason and the purpose of the festival is to build community, appreciate diversity, and then also learn. We would also like to encourage anybody who knows or would like to volunteer. We do need volunteers for this event. We also are, through the great appreciation of Angelica, we have lost a board member, so we would like to fill the gap that we have now. We are seeking interested people to become board members. And also, just like anybody who has an event or a party, we need money. So if anybody would like to make a donation, that'd be very much appreciated. I will be doing the fundraising in the booths again this year. And we'd also like the, we had enjoyed appreciation and support from the city council and the City of Shakopee, so we would once again ask for that and appreciate that. Anybody have any questions of me?
Councillor Lehman?
Yes.
Mayor, I have two questions. The first is, it's August 2.
Yes.
Friday. Where's it gonna be located at?
It's gonna be at the same location, at Huber Park.
Okay. And if somebody wanted to make a donation, where would they make that donation to?
They could do it to the CAP Agency. They could send it to me, and then I will forward it to our treasurer, is Ibrahim Mohammed. He does, is our treasurer, but I don't have his address memorized, sorry.
So they can get them just to the CAP Agency and?
Yeah, and you could put it to me, and then I, but make it out to the Shakopee Diversity Alliance. And then I will forward it to Ibrahim, who is our treasurer, and he'll deposit it.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Whiting?
Is there information on the website, or?
We don't have the website updated yet, but we're working on that. Chris Oxtrow, who used to be a member, said that she is on the Facebook media account, so I just heard that as before I left work, so we're working on that.
Great.
Okay.
Thanks.
Teri, the SDA does some great work, and obviously, the festival's a big part of that. They're very successful. Is this the fifth year?
I believe it's the seventh.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah, this'll be our seventh, yep.
Great, yeah.
And so we're looking for more board members. I keep saying that I'm going to be retiring soon, but it doesn't seem to happen. This is my 30th year at the CAP Agency, so I don't seem to be able to quit anything, but I have moved to Burnsville to live with my daughter, so it does, it is, I still work at the CAP Agency, but I, we're looking for more, a leadership succession in the Diversity Alliance. So if anybody knows anybody or wants to join us, it's a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll look forward to that.
Thank you.
Any other resident like to come forward and make comment not on the agenda tonight? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome. Seeing none, then, we will move forward to item number six, business removed from consent. I have two items. 4A2, Councillor Lehman?
Mayor, I took the delinquent sewer and storm drainage accounts off consent for really two purposes. One, in case somebody wanted to speak to it and pay it here tonight and avoid the $25 administrative fee. So I don't know if there's anybody here for that purpose, but wanted to give them the opportunity. Second purpose was, I wanted to know if, there seems to be, I'm looking for a solution to somebody, if somebody's buying a house in Shakopee, is there a way somebody can look up if there's any outstanding service fees on a property before they buy it, other than through a title company? They could call City Hall, I suppose.
Mr. Reynolds?
Well, actually, that's the whole purpose of title insurance, Councillor Lehman, is to make sure that there are no encumbrances on the property.
Right.
So when you're buying that title insurance, that the title insurance company is saying that, that there are no encumbrances there.
Apparently, that's not happening, and we can't force them to do that, so if somebody called City Hall if they were gonna buy a property, could they find out if there's sewer, storm, or garbage service outstanding on the property?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, they could, and then we would have to call Shakopee Public Utilities, because they handle the billing of those services other than the garbage. And we would, could find out if there's an outstanding balance there, but they can sure take that step to try call Shakopee Public Utilities. The kicker is, or the problem is, is a lot of that information is private as well. So it's, it gets to be difficult on trying to define that information. With the electric utility in place there, all the other utilities become private data as well, too. So it's, it's tough for the title companies to find that, but they have to work with the sellers of the property, and the, you know, the buyers have to work in kind of cohesion there to allow one another to figure out what's, what's in place there. And a lot of times, what we're seeing is a lot of times, homes that are sold or that there's tenants in the current building, and the owner of that, owner of that building isn't aware of that. And so we're working with Shakopee Public Utilities and these owners to make sure that they can sign a form or release form that gives them the authority to view the bill, and at that point in time, or get a duplicate billing to ensure that their tenants, because that's a lot of times what we're finding, is that is the tenants of properties that are, are delinquent on these accounts, and it's, you know, either a new homeowner or the, or the current owner of the property that isn't necessarily aware of it. Then we go through and work with Spuck on an annual basis to certify the city's utilities, and Spuck collects their utilities a little bit differently than, than what the city does, so.
Shakopee Public Utilities does offer shadow billing, but a lot of the times where the owner will rent, and then the rentees are in charge of those utilities, and then they leave. I've been contacted by a resident, and the conversation was that the title insurance does not cover this, and so there's a little bit of dispute, and I, further clarification on that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we've, I mean, we've taken quite a few calls every year when this comes out. It comes out either in the utilities or in the garbage piece of that as well. We've talked to a lot of the local title companies. If we talk to them, we tell them, you know, you gotta make sure that you're talking with Shakopee Public Utilities, and you're talking with Republic Services, because we have organized collection here in the city. And it's not necessarily, it's kind of unique compared to some of the other cities in the surrounding metro area. So we tell them that, and I'm sorry, your first part of your question was?
The one resident had claimed, or said to me that her title insurance would not cover this.
Right, that's right. In the title companies that we've talked to, it's kind of hit or miss, but I think the more pressure you put on your title companies, we've seen them come back and, and out of kind of goodwill, make sure that, you know, they'll go back and try to collect them from the previous owner as well, too. But it's really putting that pressure on that title company to come back, and, you know, you're paying for that service, and, you know, title companies are getting a fee for that, and a lot of times, if a home turns over a couple, two, three times, there isn't a lot of title work to be done if it's, you know, flipped a couple, two, three times in a few years or something of that nature. So putting pressure on them is kind of the route we suggest to everybody that contacts us. And then we often hear from title companies, and we'll work with them and try to figure out where it's at, and work hand in hand with them through the process, so.
Councillor Whiting?
You know, we, we talk about this every time this comes up, and possibly, the League of Minnesota Cities or one of our other organizations may be dealing with this, and maybe can give us some guidance on how to handle some of those private data information for title companies and potential home buyers. I'd just like to see a better system put in place so that this doesn't keep coming up. I don't know if there's any suggestions?
And Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Whiting, it really is that, it's kind of that electric piece that causes all this other data to be private. If we had a city that didn't have that electric piece, and we just had water, sewer, and storm, it's a, it's a pretty cut and dry process that way, but when you get that private data piece in there, it makes it more cumbersome a little bit, but.
Is there a way we can share some of that data so we can at least get into that portion of the system, so if somebody does check with us, we can get that information back to them?
What we often do, if we get calls, we'll, we'll call over to Shakopee Public Utilities. We have a contact over there, and they'll kind of give us, they can't give us a bill, but they'll give us some information that can at least help, if it's an owner, with, you know, which tenant is it, or, you know, what was the timeframe of this bill, so at least then they can go back and say, okay, it was, you know, certain, it was tenant A that was in this unit at that point in time. So it's a little bit limited information, but, you know, Shakopee Public Utilities would, willing to work with them on that end of it as well, too, and not at the city in the midst of it, so.
Could we create some ordinance, local ordinance, that would allow us to get that information to the property owners? I mean, it's a tenant property owner situation, you know?
And it's not necessarily our information, it's Shakopee Public Utilities' information. Obviously, they give us the city side of that information, but it's all within their system, and they, you know, they do this once a year, rollover of their delinquents at year-end, and that's the information that we grab, and then, then we have to look up the account number, because they bill by the account number and not necessarily the property owner, so then we have to look up, you know, we go through the effort of trying to find the property identification number, and then notify the owners at that point in time, so. It's a labor intensive process, it's, it's not ideal, but it's what we have, and that's what the statute allows us to tie our utilities to the property, and that's, that's our enforcement of the collection piece of it.
Councillor Lehman?
Mayor, I can certainly respect the data privacy issues. It just seems ironic that buying a property, you can't find out if the past tenants or owner has any outstanding stuff on the property, but they don't have a problem having you pay that bill for somebody else.
The new owner.
Right.
Right.
And that's the part that I have a problem with. It's a hard situation, and maybe, maybe all that I'm looking for is something so simple as a little educational box somewhere that says, if you're buying a property, request of your title company the following. And, and make them do their job.
Yeah. And Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman, we actually have that information on our website as well, too, under the Finance tab. You can look at Special Assessments, you can, you know, put in a search for your property ID, and we have some of that information out there to contact, you know, the garbage, contact Shakopee Public Utilities, I believe is there as well, too. So that's, it's there for a lot of those title companies, and, you know, like I said, we've educated as much as we can with those title companies, but a lot of times, it's just, you know, they'll get frontline people in at the title companies, and they're just making a call, and they'll call, they'll call Shakopee Public Utilities and say, I need the, I need the water bill. And they're just looking for a number real quick, so they can put it down and close the property, or the property closing gets delayed, and now it accrues additional charges for another month, or another two weeks or something of that nature, and they don't go back and double-check, so.
Still should find a, a way to have it on the previous owner rather than the new owner, and I, I get it, and I don't know what the solution is, but.
Yeah, but at least we're talking about it and trying to find solutions.
Right.
With that being said, Mayor, I'll offer Resolution R2019-037, excuse me, certifying assessments for delinquent sewer and storm drainage accounts from 2018, adding a $25 administrative charge for collection with payable 2020 property taxes.
Excellent. I have a motion.
There was another, there was another portion of that about writing off the 18 delinquent accounts totaling $42.54.
Right, and I'm assuming that's in the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second.
You can double-check if you want to make sure.
It is, yeah.
Okay.
I have a motion, a second. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye. 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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to 4A3, Councillor Lehman?
Mayor, I took this one off, not because I'm necessarily opposed to where the fund transfers are going and what they're being used for, but I did have just a couple of questions, one question, actually. Paying off the City Hall Construction Fund early, will that still be interest-bearing but retroactive to the date of payoff, so we're saving some interest payment?
There wasn't, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman, I don't believe there was interest on, on, on that piece. We were just moving funds from, on an annual basis, so that the building fund could afford to, to move over that $170,000 a year. There was no interest.
Okay.
Bearing on that piece of it, so.
Okay.
It's not an interest savings by doing it early, but.
So it wasn't, we were using revenue as payments, but not a loan?
Right, right.
Okay. The second piece was to have a little over $2 million surplus in a general fund after the year ends is, you know, when we started this whole process of different budgeting and stuff, the purpose was to not have such an excess, but fund balance, and it's almost like the fund balance is greater now than when we started the process. There's a whole lot of things that go into that, I get it. You know, you've got savings here and there, you don't know what Mother Nature's doing, and, and you've got departments that are running lean and mean, saving money, which is good. So I get it. It's just something that I wanted to keep an eye on moving into the next budget cycle, so.
Just imagine what it would have been without that budget process.
Or what it would have been if, if we didn't have the winter we had, right? So, so I get there's a lot of things that go into it, but that's, that's a pretty big number, so.
Well, I think you're correct. There are, you know, the growth, and we did have some expense. We, Shakopee's always been pretty mean and lean, rather have this problem than, than the opposite problem. And I, you know, sure, the, the number looks big and that, but I, I think this is a, a pretty prudent city government on that, and could it be closer and tighter? I think we're trying to work on that, and, but this is no different than what's been going on for 15 or 20 years in our community.
This is larger than the past.
Other comment, or Darren?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I should note that, I mean, our licenses and permits were up significantly. We had a lot of, a lot of activity towards the end of the year, too, and that, that boosted it by, I mean, we increased the revised budget a half million dollars, and we blew that out of the water by a half million dollars, so it, I mean, we have a lot of projects in the pipeline, and that, that was a big, and it's a shot, it's a, it's a picture in time, too, at December 31, and there was a lot of projects that came in right before year-end, and that, we'll have to use those funds then to, for the next couple of years to, to do those inspections and incur those costs, so.
Other questions, comments? Councillor Lehman?
No, I like, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve 2018 general fund transfers of 848 to 8301, and 1.33871699, City Hall Construction Fund and the Capital Investment Fund. Close the City Hall Construction Fund.
I have a motion and a second by Councillor Contrias. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye. 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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving ahead, then. 10, or 781, financial review for March, uh, March of this year. Darren?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I'll move up here now, real quick. All right. So through the first quarter, 25% of the year, things are on a good path. We just talked about the year-end transfer for our excess revenues over expenditures for last year. This year's revenues are looking good as well. Our licenses and permits, there again. We did increase this budget for 2019 over what was originally in place for 2018, but we're already at close to 60% of that budget, so we've had some other big projects.
Nine months to go.
Right. So Kurski said he gets to take the rest of the year off, and I said, no, you just keep on doing what you're doing here, so. So that obviously looks, looks good on that end of it. Taxes, we won't get in until June. Everything else is kind of in line with where we're at. Let's see, intergovernmental revenue is very similar to where it was last year at this point in time. Those are all kind of cyclical things of when some state payments and things like that, of that nature come in. Charges for services, that's, a lot of that's the community center type stuff, or any other type of, of fee type of stuff like that, and that's there again, right in line with where, where it should be for this point in time. Misland use revenue, if we recall from last month, we didn't have much, or was very minimal at that point in time. That was due to us not having the interest allocated for the first few months due to us closing the books from 2018 as well at that point. So we've done that at this point in time. Interest is, is in there, and it's, it kind of obviously falls back in line to where, where it should be at this point. Any questions on revenues at this point?
Do you think, just, we just discussed it, or are you looking maybe to increase the budget on the license and permit, you know, eventually here?
You know, for 2019, we probably will, because we'll obviously get some more, more activity in, and as we start preparing the budget here this summer, we'll have a little bit better ideas, we get a few more months into the, into the year. 2020, you kind of guess, I mean, it's, you're playing with the economy a little bit, and things are, I mean, not that things are on a downturn at the moment, but things are kind of easing, it seems like, on the, on the, on that front. So we've got a lot of things in the pipeline, a lot of land that we're, you know, we're still able to build on and such like that from a single-family resident standpoint. So things are there, so, but we still have to be a little bit cautious on that, because it can turn, turn pretty quickly as well, too, so. So if we look at our expenditures, pretty much every department's in line, the mayor and council, business unit there or division is a little, is higher than, has, or higher than that kind of our target at this point in time, but we've talked about that, that that department or division incurs a lot of expenses at the front end of the year. Similar to that, if we look at kind of the street maintenance, it's still within the target range of, at 29%, but it is a little bit higher, is about $170,000 higher than where it was last year, and that's obviously due to our, our winter that never ends, it seems like, so hopefully, we're officially done with that, but that division obviously will have expenditures for the rest of this year for street maintenance items, and then winter plowing next, first half of next year and such, so.
Councillor Lehman?
What was the natural resources issue? A carryover of tree treatments or something?
Yep, so at the natural resources, it has a red arrow here as well. That, we actually had a tree trimming contract. I don't know if you guys, I think we had, like, at Memorial Park, I believe, there was some tree trimming there. I don't know if there's other areas within town or not, but 2018, we didn't, we didn't do that tree trimming contract, because it came in a little bit higher than what we anticipated for bids. I think we rebid it and did the work now this past late winter, whatever, when, so those variances should subside as the year progresses, because we won't have that contract for the remainder of the year as we move forward, so. Other than that, your overall expenditures are at 24%, so you're just under that 25% target, so you're sitting good overall as, as the city's general fund, which is your basic operations and such, so. Any other questions within the general fund?
Questions?
We'll look at the community center, or the, kind of the community center ice arena area, next. Just a little bigger here. And as I mentioned previously as well, too, we have Sand Venture that we broke out now, too, that we're able to isolate those expenditures and, or that business unit itself. Obviously, that won't have a lot of revenue or expenditures incurred until that operation opens up this summer. Ice Arena, if you look at the revenues there, they're about $48,000 more than they were this time last year. That's mainly due to the billing of the Shakopee Youth Hockey Association for their March ice usage. We got that bill out, they were, basically, their season was done the first part of March, first half of March, we got that billing out shortly thereafter, and they actually paid us before the end of March this year. Compared to last year, they paid us in the first part, in April, so if you look, comparing apples to apples, we're very similar to where we were at last year, probably a little bit ahead of schedule, because that billing wasn't all of $48,000, so, but that accounts for that variance on that end of it. Wages and benefits are up a little bit in the ice arena, and that's due to, we have a pay period, our seventh pay period ended on March 31, last year it ended on April 1. So it's a timing variance there as well, too. So that's when we look at these financial reports, a day makes a difference sometimes, so, and here, and here it does for the wages, so. Operating expenditures, we did see, I believe it's our electric and natural gas bills are a little bit higher than they were last year at this point. I know natural gas is, is more expensive than it was last year, but that's something we'll, we'll keep an eye on, but it's, we're still within our operating budget parameters at this point, so. Community center revenues, we're at about $38,000 more than we were last year at this point in time, so that's good news. We'll take that every, every time.
And that's non-membership revenue, right?
That's all community center.
All revenue.
Community center.
And by the month on taking out of the.
That's monthly and annual memberships and daily memberships, the whole, the whole nine yards there, so. Wages and benefits, if you notice, is up about $84,000. I believe about half of that is due to that timing difference on the pay period ending March 31 versus April 1 last year. And then a lot of it, the rest of it is mainly due to part-time staff. This year, we're kind of fully staffed at that part-time level versus last year, where I know we were struggling to, to kind of fill some of those, those needs and roles, and really define how many, what are staffing levels needed to be at that point in time, so. Then the operating expenditures are up a little bit, but that's mainly due to the rent charges for the community center facility itself, now that it was fully online in 2018 versus 17, when we did the rent charge calculations in there. That's, that's the main difference at this point in time, so. And then deferred revenue is very similar to where it was last month, so. All in all, it looks, you know, very good for the first quarter, and we'll keep hopefully plugging away in the same direction for the, for the remaining quarters this year.
And our numbers are becoming more true as we, true, true, right?
Yep, yep, this report should be getting, it's, it's pretty accurate without a lot of deviations now, other than those timing things that
Right.
you can't change from year to year, so.
Counselor Lehman?
So, just so I'm clear, because this is backward to the bookwork I'm looking at it business-wise. Under the ice arena, the year-to-date actual 2019, 70,000 in parentheses, that's a positive number.
Yeah.
And the 131 under community center is a negative number.
Correct.
And plus the.
They do it backward from.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
So, add up the 14.6 for Sand Venture, which has been closed, the 131 for the community center.
Yep.
Comes up to about 145, and then subtract the, the 70 from the, from the ice arena, and.
Yep. It just throws me off whenever I see the parentheses because they're actually, it's opposite.
And that's the way our report comes out, and I apologize for that. It's, it's when it combines the revenues and expenditures.
Questions on the community center?
So if not, I will move on to our kind of investment report for the first quarter. As we, council approved the revised investment policy last council meeting, I believe it was. Part of that was some of that reporting piece of that, and in this report is basically a couple of those bullet, or those bulleted items that we had talked about in that investment policy, just for your perusal, obviously. This is the whole report, it's 42 pages, I'm not going to go through every page, I'm just going to hit a couple of highlights. If there's got any specific questions, please feel free to, to stop me or grab me on, on that end of it, so. This is the main page that I look at when I get this report. I like to kind of see where we're at in comparison to other years. I kind of ignore that, that one month, or even that three-month one, because it's, it's, it's too volatile to really compare on, on an annual basis of how we're doing. You can really see that that one-year returns, last year was a good year, we, we saw returns going up, interest rates were increasing. We were actually making some money finally, and, and it's not a lot of money, but it's a whole heck of a lot more money than it used to be. So, making 2% on a, on a bond felt a whole lot better than 1% for a five-year bond that we had been seeing for years, so. Rates have kind of decreased a little bit, but we expect them to hold steady now that the, the feds are kind of putting the pause on interest rate increases. There's been kind of a pushback into the, the bond market, so it's been pushing these yields down a little bit now for 2019, but. What else we got? So this is just the makeup of our, our portfolio. You can see the, the market appreciation, that's that, how our investments did, just holding them. And we hold our investments to maturity, so we're not buying and selling. Oftentimes, we'll see a decrease in that amount, we'll see a negative apprecia, or market.
Mark-to-market.
Yeah, mark-to-market. We'll see a negative number in there. It doesn't really mean anything because we're not cashing everything out to take advantage of that $361,000. We're, we're holding until.
Counselor Lehman?
To maturity, so.
Mayor, I think it's important that the finance director explained that the beginning market value of $46 million is not just fund money that the city has to just go out and invest and try to wheel and deal and make some money on it. These are accumulations of all these various funds, some dedicated funds, that we're holding for, for their intended purpose.
Correct. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman, our cash, we put it in a cash and pool investment. So we take all of our cash, and we pool it together to make our investments. But all that cash then is assigned to a specific fund. So obviously, we just went over to general fund, the general fund gets a chunk of it. Well, we have our enterprise funds, our sewer and storm drainage fund, we have our, our internal service funds, we have our, HRA, or not our HRA, or.
EDA.
EDA, I'm sorry. We have all those funds that account for a specific dollar amount, and they all have a legal purpose. They all need to have their dollars accounted for within their fund. But from an investment standpoint, we take those dollars, invest them out to, to make best use of the citywide piece of that, so. Just another one right here is, is comparing the portfolio to the benchmark. We had looked at the, the yield to maturity, the benchmark was 2.35%, and that was that, using that benchmark of, of a mix of, oh, what was the mix of the Bloomberg, the Bloomberg Barclays one-to-five-year treasury, and then mortgage-backed securities of 15-year index. So, we're meeting or exceeding that, that benchmark at this point in time, and obviously that fluctuates, ebbs and flows as the. I'm sorry, excuse me?
Thank you very much.
Well, it's, it's, it's not me. We have an investment manager that actually is professional at this, and, and looks at it on a daily basis, and it really makes sound decisions for the city as well too. So that's a really good piece of that, that I hadn't had that before here, and I would strongly, I've strongly recommended it to other cities because it's, it's, it's a nice piece to have, so. Here's just our top 10 withhold, our holdings within the city. And then we have all the activity throughout the, throughout the quarter. And then we have a listing of all our investments. Back here, we have them by maturity date, every investment we have by maturity date, which is part of that investment policy. And here's another, we have two accounts with Securian, ones that holds mainly our investments that we have a little bit longer term. And then we have this one that's more of our cash flow ladder that we need to work on on a six-to-12-month basis on that end of it. So, a lot of the same information here as well. And here's just a little bit of economic overview. We've talked a little bit about that yield curve, I won't get into a whole lot, but it's still, it's not inverted yet. So that's a good news from a, a business standpoint, is that, an economy standpoint, that we're not necessarily headed into a recessionary period. We're headed, I don't see, from what I hear, it's growth isn't growing exponentially, but it's holding steady or, or just a slight decline a little bit on that end of it. So, not recessionary, but just doing well. Unemployment obviously is low and such like that, so. Any questions on the investment policy? I don't want to get into too much detail out of it.
Questions, comment? No?
Alright, thank you.
Darren, thank you for your update, and including the investment information in the packet. Alright, let's move on then to 782, premise permit for Shakopee Prior Lake Water Ski Association, and Laurie?
Actually, Mr., Mayor, I'll, I'll just kind of address this really quickly. I know that there were some questions that, at least once council member had. Essentially, when it comes to premise permit for gambling activities, the state requires us to basically do a resolution of agreement or disagreement. So, that's why the permit is here. It's for the Prior Lake Shakopee, excuse me, the Shakopee Prior Lake Water Ski Association at the, the being built Willie McCoy's that you all are very familiar with. So, I know that we have somebody in the audience that can ask, answer some questions if you have them, and with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Alright. Counselor Brennan?
I just had a couple of questions. I was wondering if, who the board is on the water skiing association?
If you'd, yep, they're here. You have a question directly of them?
Yep.
Please come forward and speak into the mic, thanks.
Hi, thanks for having us. I'm Tim Fitzgibbs, I'm the president of the Shakopee Prior Lake Water Ski Team. I've been a member of the team since 1995, when we used to ski on Lake O'Dowd. So it's, it's nice to be able to ski at the quarry and have a place that we can call home, so.
Okay.
And this is April Johnson, she's our gambling manager.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
These, do you know at this point, are these pull tabs that you're going to be doing, or bingo?
Yes, it would be a pull tab booth.
Okay. I don't know if I had any other questions, I just didn't know who the board members were and were asked to approve something.
Well, we have you up there. You want to talk about your events you're planning for this summer at the Quarry Lake Park?
Sure, sure, we've, our whole schedule's on our website. We've got Thursday shows for, free to the public, starting mid-June going through mid-August. We've got five adaptive ski events. We've, last year we had three successful ones. We were on CAR 11 news and in the newspapers, it was a huge success, and we've really grown the program. So this year we have five. Two, two are public events, free to, and all the events are free to the adaptive athletes. So, we've got five of those, and then we've got three learn-to-ski events scheduled, and a, and a water skiing tournament, three-event tournament.
Other questions, Counselor Lehman?
Is, is there, what's your relationship with Willie McCoy's, and, and at what point are you going to be bringing this online and providing that service, or that?
We're, we're here now to get a jumpstart because we need to get our license before, you know, they open, so. Our relationship is just business right now. I, I don't know them personally. We've been contacting them since October 2017, trying to get in the door. And we finally got a meeting with them last month, and they signed a lease for us, so we're, we're happy to get in there. And, you know, if we can get our license, we need to get started on our booth construction and start hiring employees and staff for it because it is going to be a, a huge moneymaker for our organization.
Have you done this type of thing before?
Yes. I was a gambling manager for Shakopee Hockey Association for six years, and then four years with the Shockways, or Shakopee Prior Lake Ski Team. And I've been president for, this is my second year as president.
Question, Counselor Lehman?
Well, I know that you've done some stuff with learning to ski, and I think you did some stuff with the disabled.
Yes, that's what we call the adaptive ski.
Yeah, great, great job with that, by the way.
Thank you.
The question I'm going to raise is not, I don't want to connect it to your gambling proceeds, but years back when the Water Ski Association was put on Quarry Lake, there was commitments made that some of the improvements made in that, that area would be jointly with the city of Shakopee. And, you know, I, I just don't, I haven't seen, we haven't seen the revenue side from the ski association in partnership with the city to make some of them improvements. So, I don't want to connect it to, but if you're looking at this for a revenue stream for the ski association, is there a portion of that that's going to go toward improvements for your purpose on the water?
Yes, absolutely. That's the problem with the site is, it's not very welcoming for the public, and especially the adaptive athletes. They're getting their wheelchairs out into a mud puddle, so definitely want to use this money to improve the site. And I've, just, I just met with the Scott County Water Conservation people this week to try, come up with a plan. And I had some contacts with Kirby Templin with the city over the winter. And we're going to move forward with a, a plan to present to the city to improve that site.
Counselor Whiting?
We've had a lot of conversation with people that want to get out there and use the lake for trout fishing. And I know there's concerns when you guys are using the lake for that, and I know there's some contractual information. But we also, since we do have an investment in that park, want to be able to use that water for other purposes, so.
Public body.
Public body, it's, it's open to the public now that it's a public park. So I know state laws kind of jump in there too. But we want to be able to work on that relationship and, you know, maybe, in my mind, I'm, I'm ready to open up that contract and renegotiate, actually. So, like Counselor Lehman said, we, we have two separate issues here, I want to make sure it's separate. But since we have you here, it's a good time to lay some of those seeds in the ground.
Yeah, we want to do everything we can to develop our relationship and make it work for everybody. But with, having exclusive rights to the water is, is a big deal for us because it's, you know, imagine a baseball game. You got a nice park and family decides to hold a picnic in the middle of center field just because it's a public park. It's kind of the same thing if we, or hope, we hope we can protect our rights on the water for motorized vehicles. We understand that there's a certain area for non-motorized vehicles, and we did put some buoys up last year, and we can improve that, identify that area better as well this year.
Are we going to do that again this year?
Yes.
The buoys and, okay.
I'd like to, the last time one of these came before us, we were trying to have a local organization, and you're a local organization with a local entity in town here, and that's great. We previously had one where they couldn't come to an agreement with any local nonprofit to, to run their bingo, and they went to a, outside of Shakopee organization, and we struggled a little bit with that. But, and then there is a requirement that you have to spend part of that money, those proceeds, back into the, back into the community. So, I think for the new restaurant, as well as Shakopee Prior Lake Water Ski Association as a local organization, I think this is good.
Thank you.
Alright, other questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Lehman?
I was just going to offer a resolution.
Thank you. Okay.
I'll offer a resolution, R. 2019-049, resolution of city of Shakopee approving a premises permit for Shakopee Prior Lake Water Ski Association located at Willie McCoy's 1710 Crossings Boulevard.
I have a motion.
Second it.
And a second by Counselor Whiting, further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Alright, moving ahead to 783, which is our 2019 community survey. Nate was going to present. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just pulling up PowerPoint. Well, as I was working on this, it got to be about 45 slides, so I cut it down to eight.
Thank you.
Because that memo was also about 40 pages long.
Talk about being efficient.
Memo was about 40 pages long, and I cut that down to eight too, so. I'm here to present the, the survey results, and I'm going to keep my presentation relatively brief because I think that ultimately, where you go from here is going to land on the shoulders of the council to make that decision. Just a little bit of background on the National Citizen Survey. It's a partnership between NRC, National Research Center, and the International City County Manager, Manager Association. NRC's been around for more than 20 years, and the survey tool that we work with has been around for just about as long. There are about 125 questions, plus some custom questions. We take out a few that don't pertain to Shakopee at all. We last administered the survey in December 16 and January 17, and then we did this again in January and February of 2019 to try to see if we get a better response rate when we weren't trying to cover over the holidays. 1,600 households were randomly selected. They received a letter and a paper survey and two reminder postcards. And then the person in each household who was 18 years or older, whose birthday had most recently passed, was asked to fill out the survey. NRC collected those results, compiled them, and ultimately the survey results in about a plus or minus 5% margin of error. Last time I was up here, we kind of talked a little bit about the validity of survey results, because I presented this to you about two years ago as well. And one of the questions that I got was, how confident can we be that these are, results are similar to what we would get if 100% of the people in the city of Shakopee took this survey? And then I think the second question is, how closely do these results reflect what the city residents actually believe? To answer those questions, I'd suggest that the survey methods are sound. They're scientifically and statistically based, and they are used across the country in over 1,000 jurisdictions at this point. NRC and ICMA did some combined research on it, and they found that cities' results were actually tied to objective things that were happening on the ground. So for example, in a city where the results were that street maintenance was poor, they could tie that back to objective things like pavement quality and other things like that in communities. So, there is some research out there that suggests that this is valid in that way. The other thing that I can point out now is the replicability. We've done this survey twice now, and for the grand majority of the things that we are measuring, we're in the ballpark. I mean, there are some places where they've deviated, but twice now, we get the same ballpark scores. And then the other thing is that we had both the online version, or the paper version, which had 408 responses, and the online version, which was an entirely different survey because it was an opt-in sample set, right? It wasn't a statistically sound sample set, but it's fairly similar. There are places that I can point out that it's different, but I could have guessed that before we actually got the results. For example, in the engagement areas, the online survey had higher levels of engagement, which you'd probably presume because people that were seeking out the opportunity to do the survey were probably more engaged overall. And then finally, there are certain things that I point out in the memo where the result kind of aligns with objective or anecdotal knowledge. I think one of the examples that I gave was the, one of the things that went up was the availability of pre-K and childcare. Well, we had four new pre-K and childcare facilities built with, I think, two more coming, so. Just as an example, so there are a lot of reasons to believe that this is a pretty valid survey and gives you a pretty good understanding of the way people in Shakopee are viewing the community at this point. So I'll just go over a couple of big picture things broadly, and, you know, painting with a broad, broad brush here. About seven or eight out of 10 residents rate Shakopee positively. And I just pulled these two high-level measures that are, you know, how do you feel about overall quality of life, and what about Shakopee as a place to live? And you can see, right about there, we're, we're at about 71% on overall quality of life being good or excellent, and we are at about 79% positive for Shakopee as a place to live. There are a couple of bright spots that I think are really important to point out. The first one that I think that everybody here should be proud of, council, staff, everybody, is that customer service is improving. 73% positive in the last survey to 81% positive, and I think that this is due to the organizational focus that we have on customer service. Our administrator's done a really great job of setting that tone, and I think everybody knows that that's a basic expectation of a staff person here in Shakopee. Appreciation for downtown and community events is growing. That's about 32% positive to 41% positive. So I think that's due to the downtown projects, community events, I think we keep on saying "thank you rhythm on the rails", and a strategic focus on improvements in that area. And then resident ratings of the community center. And then resident ratings of the community center are going up from 66% positive to 80% positive. And obviously that has something to do with some of the improvements that were made there in terms of infrastructure, but there are a lot of other things that are going on. I think Jay told you before the meeting this morning, or this evening, that we had 1,400 peoples go up there for the NHL event and another 600 for the candy grab. So people are, I think, appreciating that facility, appreciating the services that we're offering and in my opinion, a lot of things that we're doing there are strategically focused, so. And then the final big thing I'd like to point out is that I don't think that resident perception always matches up with the objective data. And we can talk a little bit about perception and reality and how people's perception is in fact their reality, but for example, I can tell you that the overall feeling of safety at 64% positive in Shakopee and 18 out of 18 in terms of comparison to benchmarks, which by the way compares us to Minneapolis. It doesn't align with a long-term trend of the crime rate going down and it does not compare at all with the crime rate that we actually see in comparison to other cities. That blue map in the upper right-hand corner, I didn't really want to focus on it too much, but you can see Shakopee, you know, we're, we're in the middle to closer to the bottom half in terms of crime rate. And if the police chief were here, we would point out that we have a lot of visitors that pass through Shakopee in 169. And that kind of artificially inflates our crime rate to a certain extent. So even with that, I think it's fair to say that Shakopee is actually a very safe community, but that's not translating necessarily to these results. Another example would be cost of living in Shakopee. It's 42% positive and 12, 12 out of 13 in comparison to metro benchmarks. I pulled this cost of living map and if you look at Shakopee down here in the lower left-hand corner on the pink map, we are definitely lower than most of the communities that are being compared within that benchmark survey. So something's not completely adding up. You can also take a look at median income versus cost of living and say, it's not, it doesn't make sense that we're not comparing more favorably to other communities in the city. So there's a perception issue. I think Counsel Lehman.
I have a couple of questions concerning, relating to the feeling of safety issue and the perception of, of crime. Does, how many cities have a women's prison, county jail, county courthouse, and all these things located right in your municipal center?
County seat.
Not many. Maybe one in every county, right? Is that playing into this? Has, the question wasn't asked, but do you think that plays into people's perceptions that gee, if we have all these prisons here and jails here, we must have a lot of crime? But that's not necessarily the case because it serves the bigger county.
I would make the argument that that probably doesn't. In the, I can see where you're coming from. I think that what probably dinged us a little bit more this time versus last time was we have had a couple of more high-profile things happen. There's another, there's, there's additional dissonance in this because people say at a, you know, 64% positive safe in the community, but 92% positive safe in my neighborhood. So there's, there's just a little bit of dissonance there. I don't think that those things really tend to bother people. And the, the crime rate statistics and, and if you look at the police crime report and the locations of where crime is actually happening, it's not happening in the neighborhoods. And a lot of it is, shall we say, passing through, if that makes any sense, so.
I think that when I was reading the survey and then I got out our annual police report that we're going to see a presentation on and I'm looking at the numbers in there going, holy moly, compared to this. But, you know, I think it is reality and perception, I think for our community, our, our crime rate is at 6.46%, which is very low. But you have to remember that we have a great influx of visitors coming to our community, you know, during, during the year and, you know, Canterbury and Valley Fair and Mystic Lake, et cetera. And, you know, that drives a lot of people in. And I look at the top 10 list, you know, during the summer, Valley Fair's on that list, Canterbury's on that list. There's also some parking lots that are on that list, but it, I believe it is a perception overall versus how you feel in your house or in your neighborhood. Now that, that disconnected, I saw that and going, we need to do a better job. Counsel Whitey?
You know, I think, and we've talked about this before, but the social media aspect of, of incidents or perceived incidents and actual incidents broadcasts it wider and for, for both good and for bad. So, you know, you, you know, your neighborhood watch kind of goes up a little if there's something going on, but it also creates this balance of saying, you know, there's issues all through this town, but it, some of them don't pan out and some of them are just vocalized more and broadcast more. So I think that actually might play a factor too.
Counsel Brown?
Is there a way to determine if the general feeling nationwide of, of fear or of fear or feeling unsafe is how that reflects on the survey or, or how statewide or?
Yeah, Counsel Brennan, I, I did actually ask, I had that same question, just trying to understand, did, did this happen here because of some big overarching national or statewide thing? And the answer was no. The other, and the other thing is as I go through recently completed surveys from other communities that we're benchmarking against in Minnesota, a lot of them have actually seen increases in their overall feeling of safety. So there's, there's some dissonance here. I don't, I can't put my finger on exactly why because it doesn't add up. The objective data doesn't tell me that people in Shakopee should be reporting this, that they are reporting that they don't feel safe in the community. Again, they also feel safe in their homes, but in 64%, I mean, the majority of people do, but it doesn't make sense that it's not higher to me.
All right, continue.
So I think if you read in my memo, I, I suggest that most of this is an opportunity. And again, I, the perception versus reality and people's perception being their reality. Our, the resident perception here, let's just be blunt, is generally lower than benchmark comparisons. I put other, four other communities up here and I'm not cherry picking. These are just the first four that I came through. Shakopee, overall quality of life, you can see excellent at 15, good at 56. Bloomington, 35, 57. Eagan, 51, 44. And Savage, 91%. They didn't have their pie chart out there. Again, just bluntly, I think that we're better than that. I think that this community is better than that rating and I know that the staff here across the board believes that the work that we're doing is better than that. And so to me, this is an opportunity to find a way to move forward strategically and to say, you know, this is what we're trying to accomplish. This is how we're going to do it. This is whether we succeeded or we didn't. So this is the recommended course of action that I put together from here because this to me as a staff person here is not what I want to see. I work here because I like it here because I think this is a good community with a lot of potential. I think everybody sitting up there and everybody else who works here feels the same way. So I'll be the first to stand here and say, there's work to do and I'd like to rise to that opportunity. This result isn't, isn't acceptable to me. I would, I think that, that we have earned better. I think we need to do a better job of proving it. That's what this is about to me. So the first thing to me is I think we need to engage in strategic planning. I think we need to connect, connect the vision of envisioned Shakopee to midterm goals and objectives and execution and performance measurement. I think we need to identify what's important in these results because not everything is equally important, right? The number of, in the memo, I say the number of people that stock goods in the event of an emergency is not nearly as important as the number of people who feel safe in their community. So I think you need to pick a few of these results in alignment with the strategic planning process to choose what's, what's important going forward and build on those things. And then I think we need to communicate strategically and proactively. And what I mean by that is to say, we need to be really clear about this is the objective that we're trying to accomplish. This is what we're doing. This is why. And then ultimately, we need to report those results. We are doing all of these things to a certain extent, but I think one of the things is that your staff here is really engaged and your staff here really is extraordinarily talented and we can do a lot. But I think that we are still struggling a little bit to pick up what exactly it is that you want us to set as the highest priority. And I mean, there, there are other department heads in here and Bill, and the administrator. And we can talk a little bit about that if you want to, but setting forth, I think, a very clear strategic plan to connect that vision to our execution is, is a big part of being able to effectively change that perception. I don't think it's a huge lift because I think we're most of the way there. I just think it's the tool that we need.
Counsel Whitey?
No, I think that's great work and great thought on, on how to move that forward. Appreciate that. I think that feeling safe in the community number is for some reason down and it shouldn't be, but that's also, like you said, an opportunity. And I would appreciate an opportunity to try and change that number and, and maybe facilitate a workshop and somehow get some plans to, to move that forward. I think that, that's a number we can work on. My mind.
Counsel Brennan?
I, I like the idea of tying in the work to the envisioned Shakopee because I think that is our goal in, in how we want or perceive the city as a direction that it's going. I'd like to see that parts of that idea are taken and that we're involved in it and maybe we identify some area that's important to us and say, we're going to be the champion for it or we're going to be working with staff or working with the community or be the spokesperson for, for that portion of it. I think it's, it's important that we're engaged also. We have a responsibility to do that.
I think, first I'd like to acknowledge that I think in the areas where we've improved, customer service, so kudos to our leadership, staff here and the whole organization. It, it moved the dial from the survey a couple of years ago. Also downtown, where everybody said they liked downtown two years ago and would like to see more, we have made some improvements down there. Much more welcoming, warming, a sense of place. That moved the dial. Also, a couple of years ago, we had a community center that was kind of discussed in our community a little bit, but to see that now a couple of years later and then to see that show up here, I was at the community center on Saturday to, to see, you know, a couple thousand people there packed in throughout the day. Great thing. So hats off to staff. Counsel Contreras?
Just a question. Obviously the survey, you know, doesn't have like a common area or didn't have like to say, well, why don't you feel safe? But is there a possibility working like on our webpage, right? Do like just a one-question survey, what would make Shakopee safer? And just get that, just get that comment back and maybe work from there because that's what we want. We want to know, we want to hear from our citizens. Why aren't you feeling safe? You know, and then maybe how can we make it safer? Or just a question is what makes you unsafe? Start from there. And maybe just the one quick, I don't know, just an idea.
Counsel Contreras, we, we did ask that question on the last survey and left it open-ended, so I do have some information on that and I completely agree with you. That's part of what strategic and proactive communication about. It's not one way. It's how do we, how do we build that knowledge base? How do we learn from the things that we're doing and learn from the community what's really going to impact these measures in the right direction?
Counsel Lehman?
Mayor, you know, I'm going to try to piece some of this together, at least in my mind, but it seems to me that if somebody feels safe at home and their quality of life at home is good and, or excellent in their, their minds, but when they go out into the community, they, they substantially drop their opinion of their safety level outside of their home. I'm sure that that perception of, of, to that individual of a drop in safety abroad in the community is going to affect their, their view of the community as a whole as a, as a quality place to be. So the real question is, I believe if you, if you work on one, it's going to affect the other. I really do. I think they're connected because it's, it is a perception. And, and I, I agree that the perception is probably misplaced because I, I can't put my finger on it like you can't, Nate, of why is it that somebody feels safe at home but not just out in the community, whether they're running to Target or wherever, you know? Without getting, as Counsel Contreras says, more information on what precisely makes them uncomfortable away from their home. Is it, is it a place? Is it a corridor? Is it, is it, you know? So I'm, I'm not going to jump too hard into this because I don't believe that it's accurate to begin with. I think it's a perception issue and a lot of which can be overcome just with education. But where there are areas for improvement, absolutely, we can make them improvements. But I think if you fix one, I think the two are tied absolutely. So we need to-
Cause and effect.
Absolutely. We need to figure out why their perception is that they're safe here but not over here. Why is that? Is it because they're afraid of, there's a lot of car accidents on 169 and they don't feel safe on 169? You know? Valid point, I guess. But it's really skewing what this is telling us, if that's the case, but we don't know that because we don't have detailed information.
I completely agree, Counsel Lehman. If you look at the, the top three that I have up there right now, how does that make sense? That combined with the objective data. You could suggest that it's an anomaly in the survey, that does happen, but there's something missing here that we're not seeing.
Mr. Reynolds, did you have a comment?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think the one thing that Nate touched on a little bit is that whatever we focus on, I truly believe we can move the needle on. We've seen that in the past now with between the first survey we did and the second survey. And there's some real opportunity, as Nate has said, and if we can figure out what those one or two big things are that you want us to really concentrate on, we certainly can then put our prospective heads together and move that needle. I, I know that we have the staff and, and the support in the community to be able to do that.
I think, I think we as council here play a big role in this too. We all need to row the boat, right? And, you know, be the, be that promoter of the community and, and the different pieces in it and of government and be, you know, be together on this. I think we, aren't we the, for the most part, the public spoke of our community? I think that's a good way. I think we took a lot of input, of valuable input from our comp plan and certainly I'd like to see a workshop where we can try to integrate those into, you know, a list of five, maybe 10 points that we want to try to move forward. We probably will not do another survey for two years. But that, that would be a great opportunity and try to, and I agree with Counsel Lehman, the perception and reality in that one graph on public safety is a telling because it says I'm safer downtown or safer in my neighborhood than in general, right? I, I didn't get that. But I think certainly there are some opportunities. I do see, recognize and acknowledge that some of the, the efforts that we have put in forward that from city staff and the downtown and the community center really I think are paying dividends and sure, we all want to see it sooner, faster and the overall effect of our great place to live in our community. But a little building block here.
Counsel Brennan?
Well, one thing I noticed in the survey too was the people stated their issues, but when it came to contacting the city or contacting the council, they were, they, they didn't do that. So it's, it's, and I think being the champion for the, for the, for the cause or for the issues and being more proactive in the community for the city and for the council would be really beneficial because people can voice their concerns then and, and then maybe even not feel like it's a burden on them.
Counsel Lehman?
The place in Shakopee that I feel the least safe is on 169.
Yes.
I mean, seriously. And how many people use it? And what do we always see? And what do we always see almost daily, especially in winter time? Ten cars in a ditch, roll over here, crash there. Our own chief of police had a write-up about, you know, maybe the design standards of it are not to the standard of, of a Minnesota winter, where it's open, it's blowing, it's flat, it's, it's freezing, it's clear ice, and, and there's issues with it. Does that make you feel safe?
It's a, no, and we know that, because it's the number one call-for-service area location, I believe.
Maybe if, if that factored into that safety question, somehow in a future survey, we try and-
Break it out.
Isolate that. Yeah, it was, is it traffic safety? Is it, is it walking safety?
Right.
You know, is it, you know, what is it that is the issue that we can target it a little better? But I know we're not going to do it for a couple of years, but-
Lighting.
Because 169 is, you know, obviously a transient corridor, corridor. It's not, if I'm in Shakopee, you know, I'm off that, but, and certainly when you're a Shakopeean on 169, you know, the, the amount of different folks from different communities is, you're one of ten, right? So.
But they pointed out that the numbers, do you feel safe downtown? And downtown could be any commercial center. Could be Southbridge might be their, their downtown. Marshall and Seventeen might be their downtown. Historic downtown might be their downtown. Them numbers are, are good, so it's only when they're outside of these areas that they feel unsafe. So what's the common denominator outside these areas?
Well, let's do consensus on doing a workshop and trying to dial this down to pick out some action items and strategically plan for, you know, midpoint on, on some things that we think we can move the dial. Would that be acceptable?
Amen.
Huh? Okay. I think a lot of good valuable information. Every survey doesn't, you know, is, is, if it was too glowing, there'd be a glare if it, I just feel like information that's from our residents, this is valuable information. And what we do with it as a, as a city staff and a council is very important till we meet again in two years and talk about it, so. Is that enough direction from staff?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Whiting?
No, I think there were some big, good points. You talked about the, the overall opinion of downtown and the small-town feel. You know, this is stuff we hear regularly, but we had a lot to be proud of in this survey, but we have some work to do, too, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Eight A, our city bill list for our review. And then eight B, liaison report. Counselor Brennan?
Oh, liaison report. Brennan, that's me. I went to the Scale Executive Committee meeting, and the topic was their reboot and their reorganization. The general meeting was canceled because of weather. Counselor Contreras and I went to the Girl Scout, judging Girl Scouts on their presentation for the world, and we represented the women of the council. And today, we went to another event, and I'll let her talk about that. And spring is, I think, here. The pop-up garden, Adopt a Pop-Up Garden, is meeting on Thursday. We had to cancel our first one because, because of the weather, so we rescheduled it to Thursday.
Because of snow.
Yeah. So we rescheduled it for Thursday at 6:30, and we're meeting at the Community Center, Senior Center. And also, I saw people fixing potholes today on Holmes Avenue, and I was really happy about that, so.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, wait. The city was doing that, too?
Yeah, yeah. Yep. Well, thank you Public Works for doing that.
Thanks. Counselor Lehman?
Spucks meeting last night. Let's see here, they had two power outages. One was seventy minutes, two customers, it was a raccoon. The other one was a transformer, and it was Dorn Company's storage trailer. Had to replace the transformer ninety minutes down. That's pretty good timing to train, change out a whole transformer, I thought. Other topic, the big topic of the night was a lot of discussion around the commission's policies regarding distributed generation resources, net metering, rules governing it, interconnection of cogeneration, small power production facilities. These are wind generation, solar generation tying into the grid with, I can't remember what the meter's called, where it can go both ways, and, you know, the rebate and how much the power cost is that goes back into the system, what the state statutes are and so on and so forth. And they, they adopted a couple of different resolutions for that, and they've got it broke down to by state statute for the amount generated. And then it'll be taking effect June 5th, I think it was? June 3rd. Wrote it down here. That's pretty much the bulk of the discussion. Good discussion on it. That's kind of interesting stuff to talk about. Learned a lot, actually, sitting here listening to it.
Did you get a copy of their audit?
I did.
Okay.
Yep, they didn't, they didn't really go over it, but I do have a copy of it. I'll read it when I get time, and then I'll probably-
Give it to staff.
Probably give it to our finance director to take a look at.
And they answered our questions? They had a list of questions?
Um, the discussion on that was they were just going to let the staffs go down the list and work through them, is my understanding.
All right. Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. I guess in the last two weeks, or I met with city staff. I did attend the NHL hockey game, the alumni game. That was a, a great cause there. The, our arena was packed. I also saw running errands in the morning for the Easter Bunny event that was, I mean, we have a parking problem in the community center. That's a great problem to have. Jay shared some numbers with me. To see that many people come in and out of our community center was great. The NHL game was, was well-run from that foundation, so, and I heard we raised some good money. Also attended the firefighters' annual banquet on Saturday. Good news, we didn't have a retirement this year, and we had a new hire class of four, so it's a plus four. Those years won't come around all the time. I got a preview that there could be four retirees next year, but we have a really good group of firefighters. They really do a good job. They take their job very seriously, so pretty impressed with that. Trying to promote some things coming up. I'll attend the Metro Cities Annual Meeting on the 22nd. I'm also going to attend the Minnesota Mayors Association. Cleanup Day, Saturday, April 27th is a big deal. And then we're talking about festivals and stuff. Main, the Main Street Banquet is Thursday, May 2nd. So get it on your calendar, that's always a great fundraiser and effort to see what that group probably going to announce, some bands for Rhythm on the Rails or whatever they're going to announce for their entertainment. That is my report. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you. We met with the MVTA, our transit company, got to tour, two new buses, toured one of the buses that are going to be actually in Shakopee, one of the smaller buses. Beautiful buses, comfortable, have the bike racks on them, so that's, that's nice. They're also promoting MVTA Get On Board Commuter Challenge. I sent staff over a resolution, but what it is, is promoting the first Get On Board Commuter Challenge is in conjunction with the first National Get On Board Day. It's a week-long commuter challenge from Monday, April 22nd to Sunday, April 28th, and targets residents and employees within MVTA's seven-member service area. Participants who alter their commutes during the week by using public transit, or bicycles, or car pools, or walking, or teleworking, will be eligible for incentive prizes donated by local business partners. So the complete details of the Get On Board Challenge are available on the MVTA website.
Excellent.
I have a question. The little bus for Shakopee that you're talking about, what, does that have specific routes in town here?
Yeah, they, the different routes, not, this wouldn't be the one that is, you know, going the express route to downtown.
Circular route.
But it's a circular route.
Like we have two routes.
Right, and so it'll be on different routes. They're not always specific to Shakopee, but it is one that will be working in Shakopee.
And if somebody wanted to utilize that service, they would go to the website, county's website?
The MVTA website has routes. I do have some route information on, and we do have it here on most of the routes, and they're in Shakopee and Savage area. I know we have routes that can get you to the Burnsville Transit Station, and then from there, you can get to the Mall of America, or you can get anywhere.
Well, you can go downtown, you can be in downtown and go to Cobb, you can go to Hy-Vee.
Yeah, all around downtown.
Their circular routes are pretty good and gotten actually better over the last many years.
Yeah, and I we noticed from our survey that we can do better. We're looking for more public-private partnerships. We actually had a discussion with Valley Fair, I think I talked about that. And I think, you know, with some of the new things coming to the Canterbury Commons area, that, that bus route may expand down that direction. But they're always looking for opportunities to, to make Shakopee a better transit-friendly community.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Contreras?
On Friday, I attended the Community Resource Fair at the Church of the Light of the World, where there was a great turnout and lots of information for the community. Again, on Saturday, Councilmember Brennan and I did judge the Girl Scout event. And then today, again, Councilmember Brennan, we participated with, well, we're invited by the Shakopee Rotary Club to come celebrate Shakopee, well, to, it's Shakopee Celebrates Reading. So we gave every, it was for the kind of first graders, and we gave them a book and a little backpack, backpack was-
Backpack was by the Shakopee Police Department, I believe, right?
Yes.
So that's a lot of, couple of good organizations there helping out. Thank you for representing the city. Mr. Reynolds, the administration report.
Nothing here, sir.
All right. Thank you. Then item, item nine, Counselor Lehman, other business.
I guess my only other business would be to see if any other members of council have any other items to bring up.
I always point to you, though, because I want to make sure that other business has a, other business.
I had other business. I wanted to make sure, Counselor Brennan, make sure she didn't have any other business.
Oh, I'm, I, I think I'm good. Counselor Contreras?
Counselor Contreras? All right.
Counselor Whiting?
I have an ass, so I'm going.
Our next item is to go to closed session for performance review for our city administrator. I would entertain a motion, Counselor Lehman.
Motion to go on to closed session pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 13D.05, subdivision three for annual performance review.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned to closed-